The Muscatine City Council will come to order. We'll begin this evening as always with a roll call by Fran.
I'm Ms. Lorette.
Present.
It's Gerald.
Present.
Maffick. Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. If there's anyone in council chambers that has an issue they'd like to discuss with council this evening that is not included in tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium, please. All right then, we'll begin with item number five on your agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, which includes items 6A, items 8A through E, items 9A through B, filing of communications, which is 12A through F, and tonight's bills totaling $2,390,431.3?
So moved.
That was Mark.
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Bob. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero. Dropping down to item 10 on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat of Wolf's second subdivision. A request has been received for a combined preliminary and/or final plat for this subdivision. If approved, the subdivision will transfer approximately 10,700 square feet of land from a partial located at 3120 Allen Street to a partial located at 3116 Allen Street. An ingress-egress easement is also included for a portion of this existing driveway at 3120 Allen Street that extends into, I'm sorry, onto the partial containing 3116 Allen Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission has unanimously approved this request. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second. Tom? Any discussion, council? It's a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing upon the vacation of a utility easement in Phase Two of the Cedar Plaza subdivision. A request has been received on behalf of the property owner to vacate existing utility easements along and between lots eight and nine in Phase Two of the Cedar Plaza subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission has unanimously approved this request. Prior to any formal action by council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will be held Thursday, September 19th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
So moved.
I heard Tom and Bob, you want the second?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion, council? It is a roll call, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Moving to item 11, 11A, from the City Administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed Weed Park Maintenance Building Project. The maintenance shop located at Weed Park has been operating out of its current location since 1973, and the facility is in need of replacement. City council approved this project during the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget discussions. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, September 19th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
That's Jeanette.
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Any discussion, council? It's a roll call, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the low bid and awarding the contract for exterior painting of all exterior insulation finished system substrates at the Clark House. The only bid received for this project was from Terry &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $49,782. There is $60,000 budgeted for this activity. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
That was Mark.
Second.
Second, Tom. Any discussion? And a roll call again, beginning with Mark.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the city's proposed comprehensive plan. The plan provides a roadmap based on community input for leveraging the strengths of the community, taking advantage of opportunities, correcting weaknesses, and addressing challenges in order to achieve all goals of the plan. Prior to the formal adoption of this 10-year plan, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, September 19th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Any discussion? Andrew?
John?
Andrew, you need a night tea guy, don't you?
Apparently. Up, there we go. All right, thank you. I'll try and keep this as brief as possible. You know, it's got a lot of ground to cover here, so try and hit the highlights. Feel free to stop me if you've got any questions or comments on anything that I'm going over here. The Comprehensive Plan is a document that contains the vision of what the community desires Muscatine to become over the course of the next 10 years, as well as the specific actions, policies, projects needed to make this vision an ideal future Muscatine a reality. Some of the specific topics covered by the Comprehensive Plan include land use, transportation infrastructure, parks and recreation, demographics, housing, economic development, environmental issues, community facilities, community appearance and character, and quality of life. The first step in developing this vision, the first step in, excuse me, the first step in developing the vision that's contained within the Comprehensive Plan was for community members to identify the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges that they felt were facing Muscatine, and what they desired the city of Muscatine and their neighborhoods to become. This process began at a series of town hall meetings that were held in the summer of 2010. In order to more effectively gather input and to plan for the future, the area covered by the Comprehensive Plan, which by state law includes all unincorporated areas within two miles of the city limits, has been divided into seven planning districts. A town hall meeting was held in each of these planning districts, as well as a community-wide bilingual town hall meeting. At these town hall meetings, there was facilitated discussions on the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges that the community members felt were facing Muscatine, and what improvements they desired to see. These discussions focused on four broad topics that are particularly relevant to the Comprehensive Plan: land use, infrastructure, economic development, and quality of life. For those unable to attend one of the eight town hall meetings, opportunities to participate were offered online and by other means. Following the completion of the town hall process, four community member advisory groups, each focused on a broad topic, assisted in the drafting of the new Comprehensive Plan. These four citizens committees met a total of 26 times, and they were broken down into the four broad topics on land use, infrastructure, economic development, and quality of life. These community member advisory groups were composed of residents and representatives of various community stakeholders. Each community member advisory group reviewed all the comments, ideas, and suggestions from the members of the community that were submitted at the town hall meetings or by other means, and then came to a consensus on which of these comments were most critical for the new Comprehensive Plan to address. City staff then created an initial draft of goals and implementation strategies designed to address these identified comments. The community member advisor groups then review and revise these draft goals and implementation strategies. Once the consensus, once the community member advisory groups came to a consensus on these goals and implementation strategies, they were then integrated with relevant background and statistical information to form the chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan's vision of a future Muscatine is contain- The Comprehensive Plan's vision of a future Muscatine is contained within 82 goals, which are spread across eight chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. In order for these goals to be achieved, there must be strategies to implement them. Each goal contained within the plan is accompanied by specific implementation strategies to make these goals a reality. In total, the Comprehensive Plan contains a total of 501 specific implementation strategies. Because it would be impractical to cover all 82 goals and 500 implementation strategies in one presentation, I'm just going to touch on a few significant ones from each chapter. However, I want to stress, any omission in this presentation of any particular goal or implementation strategy isn't a comment on how meaningful it is. The following three items have identified as the top three transportation priorities for the city of Muscatine. Completion of projects for which the city of Muscatine has already begun, reconstruction of Mulberry Avenue from Hauser to the bypass, and the continuing maintenance of existing transportation infrastructure in good working order. The plan also identified a number of transportation improvement products, projects, as vital to the future Muscatine. These include the rebuilding of Mulberry, portions of Mulberry, Lucas, and Hauser Streets shown here on the map in purple, working with the Iowa Department of Transportation to enhance Business 61, shown on this map in yellow, in order to make it a community asset which assists in efforts to revitalize the areas through which it passes, expansion of the existing trail network by adding links shown here in green to ultimately form a loop encircling the community, and the construction of new roadways that are identified on this map in red. In addition to recommending specific transportation projects, the plan also makes, the plan also calls for specific transportation-related policies, including one for safe routes for non-motorized travel, which first calls for all critical routes for non-motorized travel linking parks, schools, parks, bus stops, and most major employment and shopping centers, and that are also located within 500 feet of most, most residences within Muscatine be identified, and then for these routes be made safe to travel by foot, bike, wheelchair, or all other forms of legal non-motorized travel. The plan also calls for the adoption of a complete street policy. It calls for the design and operation of the city of Muscatine street network to create a connected network of streets accommodating in a safe, easy, accessible, convenient, and comfortable manner for all users. Moving on to the next chapter here. As a result of data generated during the process of having the island levy certified, there will be changes to the flood insurance rate maps for the areas that are protected by the island levying. Preliminary maps issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency indicate a significant reduction of area that located within a 100-year flood plain. When these maps are finalized, the 100-year flood plain will shrink from the area shown in yellow on this map to the area shown in red. And significantly what this means is, upon a finalization of these maps, which should occur in early 2015, there will be no structures in the city of Muscatine located within a 100-year flood plain south of Hershey Avenue. And that's going to be a major benefit for both homeowners and businesses. The plan calls for the city to make all necessary changes to its flood plain regulations as soon as possible to take advantage of this favorable map change. The plan calls for the city to play an appropriate and proactive role in environmental quality issues. Specifically, implementation steps in this areas include: for public facilities and operations to be a model for private, be a model for implementing environmental quality programs, making changes in the zoning ordinance to better accommodate without negatively impacting neighboring properties, businesses, and residents for solar panels and wind turbines, which is an issue that's starting to crop up. The Future Land Use Plan presents Muscatine's preferred future land use scenario in map format. It will guide land use decisions and policies related to land use by depicting the desired future land use for any given location. The Future Land Use Plan should not be confused with a zoning district map, which is a regulatory tool that depicts what development and activities are currently legally permitted on any given parcel of land. The land use categories that comprise a future land use plan are intended to represent the preferred future land use and reflect the unique opportunities and assets associated with neighborhoods, natural resources, and public infrastructure. The land use categories reflect a general mix, general mix of desired land use, not specific design or develop, not specific design for development or preservation. The Future Land Use Plan assigns all land within the area covered by the Comprehensive Plan to a land use category. And because it's hard to discuss everything that's on this map, I'm just going to discuss some of the guiding principles that went into putting this together. Based on community input, a primary characteristic of the Future Land Use Plan is for the preservation of existing land use patterns in already developed areas. The plan calls for an increase in new development, housing, and commercial on vacant lots in portions of the city already served by public infrastructure, while ensuring that infill redevelopment projects are well-designed and compatible surrounding uses and building types. Infill should be of a tight scale and orientation and design that maintains or improves the character, aesthetic quality, and livability of a neighborhood. Recognizing that not all new development can be accommodated through infill, that new urban growth onto previously undeveloped land will occur, the plan tries to guide this into locations that are suitable for intensive urban development and have existing, and have easy access to existing and planned urban infrastructure and services. And the plan kind of identifies two areas for this type of development. One on the northeast portion of the city along the proposed Highway 38-61 connector, and the other on the northwest corner of the city coming off the New Palms Drive, which is where the theater is located. And so this is where the plan sees new greenfield development primarily occurring over the course of the next 10 years. The city of Muscatine will soon undertake a comprehensive review and rewrite of its 40-year-old zoning ordinance. The plan calls for this review and rewrite to be undertaken to implement the vision set forth in the plan. The zoning ordinance should be structured in a manner that supports the implementation of the Future Land Use Plan. All future rezonings should be in compliance with the Future Land Use Plan. As this new ordinance is created, each decision will be evaluated against the yardstick of the Comprehensive Plan. Does the proposed chain rationally move Muscatine towards the land use plan portrayed in the Future Land Use Plan? Land use regulations contained within this zoning ordinance should have sufficient flexibility to preserve, preserve the unique character of individual neighborhoods, and to adapt to the unique, to adapt to unique and difficult site conditions. The plan also calls for the new zoning ordinance to be more user-friendly, to make use of tables and illustrations, to make clear different permitted uses, parking signage, parking, signage, and any form standards between various districts. Plan also sets as a goal for the revised ordinance to be made fully functional online, including cross-link, including linked cross-references, and the ability to look up zoning regulations by address. Kind of what this envisions is you'd be able to come to the city website, type in your address, and it will pull a section of the zoning ordinance that would apply and pertain to your property, so you can easily look up what you can and can't do with your particular piece of property. The plan recognizes the importance of historic preservation by calling for zoning, for zoning in historic districts to preserve the historic land use patterns and be structured so that any new structures or major renovations to existing structures are sensitive to the historic form of buildings in the designated historic district. Moving on to another chapter here. Maintaining existing parks and recreation facilities in good working order should be the city's highest parks and recreation-related goal. The plan seeks to build on the success of the Muscatine Soccer Complex by supporting the ongoing community effort to complete the Muscatine Soccer Complex Phase Three Development Project, which will add four new fields, 228 slot-spot parking lot, and other amenities to west of the existing soccer complex. During the public participation process of creating the new plans, one of the most requested new community amenity was for a dog park. The Comprehensive Plan recognizes this and establishes some parameters regarding the construction, design, and operation of a dog park as a municipal asset. It should be noted the plan does not call for a dog park specifically to be a municipal facility, but rather establishes the parameters for a municipal dog park if this is the route the community chooses to go. The plan calls for the development of a master community image-appearance plan, which will serve as a guide for elected officials, city staff, and community leaders and citizens in addressing appearance issues by doing the following. Establish and clearly define the image and/brand that Muscatine wishes to portray. Detail the design elements that will help establish a more consistent and attractive community-wide image. The Community Appearance Plan will specifically address the following streets, critical corridors, gateways, community facilities, signage, landscaping, public art, neighborhood and commercial districts, land use regulations, and code enforcement. It'll detail the regulatory changes and aesthetic improvements necessary to implement this image, as well as identify key community appearance issues, locations that are particularly vital to the community's appearance, and opportunities to leverage community partnerships and planned projects to further image goals, as well as prioritizing key issues and opportunities, and identify the specific issues for which specific action plans need to be developed. The map, this master community, community image-appearance plan will then be applied in the implementation of all relevant Comprehensive Plan goals. Other goals contained within the Community Facilities and Amenity Chapter include support of the Blue Zones initiatives, call for standardized trash cans. What that means is picking up the garbage in containers that are similar to the recycle bins, and it calls for this based on two reasonings. One being ultimately will save the city money, the other being that it will improve the appearance of the city by keeping trash in heavily-lidded cans, which cut down on some of the litter blowing around our alleys, which was an issue that was one of the top issues that was raised during the public participation section of this. Plan also notes the need, monitor the need for a third fire station in the East Hill areas if the community grows that direction, and continuing support for the art center and library. In terms of economic development, the plan calls for city of Muscatine policies and regulations to promote economic development and strike a balance between economic development, the maintenance of high-quality municipal services, quality of life, and the financial health of city government. It also calls for the city to develop and adopt zoning permitting and financial incentives that encourage development that are consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. It also identifies one of the important ways to grow the Muscatine economy is to, is to retain within Muscatine a greater percentage of wages paid out by Muscatine businesses. What this calls for is, how do we make this a more, we should be focusing on how to make Muscatine a more attractive place to live for those already working here. And the final chapter deals with housing. The Housing Chapter calls for a high-quality living environment in all neighborhoods, the preservation of stable residential neighborhoods, and where necessary, the improvement of condition of existing housing stock in Muscatine, the promotion of a high living, high-quality living environment through enhanced code enforcement, the revitalization of established neighborhoods, particularly blighted areas by promoting development that conserves land, promotes historic resources, promotes pedestrian accessibility, and integrates different uses of property. And finally, the remediation and reuse of existing sites, structures, infrastructures, and infrastructure preferred over new construction in undeveloped areas. And that concludes a very brief overview of the plan, so happy to take any questions.
Yes, Your Honor, and Andrew. Thank you. Good job.
Your Honor, just a quick, just a quick comment. Council's had the document, which is well over 500 pages now, is it?
Four seventy-something, I think.
Four seventy, okay. Four hundred and seventy pages now. You've had it for several weeks now. Public hearing is set for the 19th of this month for a public hearing and adoption. Question for council. If you'd like to have, if you have specific questions or items that you'd like to review next week during the in-depth session, we need to know that so we can get it on the agenda. If you think you're good to go for the public hearing on the 19th, we'd like to know that as well, I guess. So it's really kind of up to you at this point in time, how many meetings you have at this point in time. Committees, the public's done a great job in putting this together. Andrew deserves a great deal of thanks for all the work and effort that he's put into this product as well. We've got a great product. So at this point, I guess I'd ask you if you'd like to have it on the in-depth session next week, if you've got multiple questions that you'd like to review with Andrew and staff, or discussion amongst yourselves, or if you'd like us to proceed to the 19th.
Tom, what do you think?
Well, first and foremost, I won't be here the 19th, so I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make. In having read the first two drafts of this, it's a huge body of work. Thanks, everybody, the staff, and everybody who took the time to participate in all those meetings. I was at some of them, certainly not all of them. A couple of things jumped out at me. One is in the area of public safety. Public safety comprises the single largest line item in our general fund budget, and there's frankly a scant mention of that in the plan. And it's not a criticism, maybe that's reality. But it strikes me that the East Hill, potential East Hill Fire Station and warning sirens in the Ripley edition are certainly things we ought to be talking about. But with that, with that kind of growth, when you contemplate growth, I think you have to contemplate the expansion of services. You build a fire station, you need more equipment, more trucks, you need more people. So food for thought, maybe that's something that can be somehow embedded in the plan going forward. The other thing that struck me was, and I was looking for it, and I've talked to Andrew about this already, in the introductory chapter, I would like to see an affirmative statement in the preamble about the fiscal well-being of the city. And effectively where I'm going with that is, this is, these are all wonderful things to do, but we do what we can afford. And those are my comments, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Jeanette, your comments?
Well, I think September 19th on Thursday would be just fine for the next meeting.
Okay. Councilman Bynum?
19th would be great.
Osama?
I'm fine with the 19th as well.
Phil?
I'm fine with the 19th also.
Mark?
19th is good.
Just one quick follow-up. The East Hill Station piece is addressed in Public Facilities, chapter of the comp plan.
Right.
So just, just an FYI.
Yeah, I'm aware that it's up there.
Okay, okay, great.
Anything else for Andrew, council?
Just one more quick question, Andrew. I don't remember seeing, under the quality of life, the PM 2.5 or the SO2. How are we going to handle it, or how are we going to measure it? What's the responsibilities of the city, if the city has any responsibility whatsoever?
I can try and handle this one. Primarily how it looks at it is our responsibility as cities to make sure, and it does mention- Primarily how it looks at it is our responsibility as cities to make sure, and it does mention that in there, all the, more broadly in terms, in terms of air quality and water quality, rather than specifically identifying SO two and the PM two-point-five issues, but make sure our operations do as much to contribute to air and water quality as possible, and, and kind of set it an example like that, and to make sure our policies promote it. You know, I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, with the dust issue, making sure that all our stuff, that we continue requiring paving and parking lots and things like that, and do everything that we have the regulatory tools to do, which on those issues is somewhat limited.
It addresses our operations, like the, the recent improvements to the, to the buses, the diesel reduction, the emission standards, to doing things that we can do or that we have control over as a city or as an organization.
Thank you. Andrew, again, thanks. Osama, comments?
I don't.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, council. Would you like me to read the motion, or the, the, again? Not necessary, okay. This is a roll call vote, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Moving along to item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting easements and property acquisitions for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project, Phase Two. This project is a continuation of the West Hill project that began in two thousand and twelve and is planned to continue for the next several years. In order to complete Phase Two, temporary and permanent easements and other property acquisitions from eleven property owners must be acquired by the city. Negotiations to complete the easements have been conducted or continue to be conducted with those property owners. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mark?
Second.
Second. Tom, discussion, council? It's a roll call, beginning with Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the two thousand thirteen asphalt overlay program. At its August fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, city council awarded the bid for this project to grant construction in the amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars. It is now necessary to approve the contract and bond. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second. Mark, I think, was that you, Mark?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion, council? It's a roll call, beginning with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding and approving the contract for the Harbor Dredge Pipe Project. Six bids were received for this project with a low bid from Hagerty Earthworks in the amount of six hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. The engineer's estimate for this project was one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cents. There is one hundred thousand dollars budgeted in the WPCP operations budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
I think that was Tom?
Yep.
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Osama? Any discussion, council? It's a roll call again, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're following along with the agendas that were for you at the back of the door, item G has been removed from the agenda. So that means we move along to item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the easement of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, staff provides to city council a request for the easement of nuisance base, nuisance abatement costs against private property owners. At this time, staff is forwarding the assessment list for unpaid abatement costs totaling forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and three cents. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mark?
Second, your honor.
Second.
Phil? And discussion, council? A roll call, beginning with Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request approving a compost site material agreement. The city has been in an agreement with Country Stone of Myland, Illinois, for the past four, I'm sorry, the past year for the grinding, screening, and removing of excess compost and wood mulch from the compost site. There are two changes to this agreement, which includes steps to be taken if county site causes damage to the compost site and the quality of materials for each party involved in the agreement. There is no monetary value in this contract because it, because it is an exchange of services. This agreement allows the expense of fifteen thousand dollars to be kept out of the operating budget for wood chipping. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil? And a second?
Second.
Second. Tom, discussion, council? This is a voice vote. Tell those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to approve the purchase of a new squad video system. Six bids were submitted with the lowest responsible bid from WatchGuard Video in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. There is ninety-five thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. In addition, three thousand dollars from the forfeiture account will be used to complete this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mark?
Second. Second.
Second, Osama? Discussion, council? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to approve a three-year impound and/or towing contract. Two bids were received with the lowest responsible bid from Midtown Towing. This contract includes the option to extend the contract an additional three years if both parties mutually agree to the extension. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil? Second, anyone?
Second.
Bob? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to declare two squad car light bars as surplus. The police department has no further need for these two light bars. If approved, one of the light bars will be sold to the Muscatine County Sheriff's Department for three hundred dollars. The other will be placed on the government surplus webpage to be sold at a later date. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Second. Jeanette? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six to zero. Well, I believe it is now time for communications from council members, beginning with Councilman Lorette.
I have nothing, nightmare. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Phil?
Nothing at this time, your honor.
Osama?
I'll just make quick comment here to remind the public that the Blue Zone Project meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, Sept- September tenth at six P.M., and I think the doors will be open at five P.M., and that will take place at the high school at the atrium. So it's encouraged citizens of Muscatine to participate, come and listen, ask questions, get input, so it's open for the public, and they will be encouraged to attend, so that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Osama. Bob?
Your honor, I, I'd like to just ask Greg a question. Greg, I, I'm not, I don't have the knowledge of what happened, but KWQC, Channel Six, showed a Muscatine ambulance during the six P.M. news broadcast, and I believe it's about some type of new mechanism, new machine, a blood testing machine that they have. Can you explain what that's all about?
I'll give it, give it a shot. It's not, it's not a new program. It's a program that the fire department implemented, I want to say in the past year. I think Jerry's talked about it before. It's a, Phil may know more, I don't know if, it's a cardiac, I believe it's a cardiac enzyme shot or, or test that they can, they can do in route in the ambulance. Happy to have Jerry or one of our firefighters provide more detail in the in-depth session, but it's a, it's, it's one of the, I know we're one of the few departments in, in the state of Iowa that, that has this, and I believe it has to do with cardiac arrest and, and it's, it's a higher-level service that we've been providing, I believe for the past year or eight, nine months in that timeframe, so yes, kudos to the fire department.
Thank you, your honor.
That. Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing, thank you, your honor.
Greg?
Nothing, your honor. Oh.[1749.12][1749.12][laughing] You got me the last time.
Any comments, Greg?
It is, it's five to seven. Thank you for the Blue Zone reminder, but it's five to seven, there's a presentation at six o'clock, but you're absolutely correct.